Okay, folks, I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of October 20th, 2014, to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is, I need a motion to sit as a licensing board.
Shall move.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First up is a Class F liquor license. Open a hearing on the application for a Class F liquor license filed by the Friends of the Land Trust for an event scheduled for Thursday, November 13th, 2014, to be held at the Millhouse, 230 Spring Street, Oak Valley, Rhode Island, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Is the applicant here? Oh, no, they're not here.
Yeah, applicant is not going to be here because both of the two or three people that were able to come were not. They, one is having knee surgery and two others, one has a meeting and one has something else that cannot be changed. So we do not have the applicant present. But I have no questions. I think it's a wonderful event.
Yep.
And they've done it before.
They have done it before. I attended last year. It's very nice of them.
Yeah, it's been wonderful. Love it.
I'll make a motion to request that the Friends' Optimal Interest be granted and rewaive their fees.
Second.
Okay, motion made second. Any other discussion, folks? All those in favor?
May I ask the public? Say everything.
It's a liquor license.
Well, it's a hearing. Anyone out in the public wishing to be heard on the liquor license, Class F license?
For the spring.
Okay. Motion made second.
Motion to adjourn this licensing board and reconvene to the council.
No, we haven't voted on it yet.
Yes, we just.
We were just about to.
Yeah, I got the "i" out of my mouth, kinda.
That's all right, Barbara's moving right ahead.
Time out.
I got the "i" out of my mouth.
Motion was made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Go for it.
Motion to adjourn this licensing board and reconvene to the council.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next is the zoning ordinance amendment and zoning map amendment hearing. Render a decision regarding the petition for a zoning ordinance amendment and zoning map amendment filed by Albert I. Hawkins, Jr., 20 Laurel Avenue, Westley, Rhode Island, 02891, for property owned by Albert I. Hawkins, Jr., located at 813 Main Street, Oak Valley, Rhode Island, and identified as assessment's plat 14, Lot 47, as a residential special zone. The applicant proposes a zone change from residential special zone to manufacturing zone. The application is filed in accordance with Section 16 of the zoning ordinances of the town of Hopkinton, as amended per on September 2nd, 2014, and continued from September 15th, 2014. Is the applicant's present? I see Mr. Hawkins with his son.
Present.
Thank you. All right. Who wants to start off, I guess? Scott?
All I'd say at the moment is I'm in, I support this proposal. The only thing that concerns me is what type of restrictions the council should make up on that property. It's rather obvious that when you get off Exit 2, go on toward Route 3, that is one of the most visible parcels of property, and for all indications, this would be improvement over the current conditions of that property, and it would leave a better impression for those visiting Hopkinton, not only our commitment to business, but also it would be more aesthetically pleasing as, you know, something that's going to be used for a useful purpose. Also, I also note that that area, we know, is a mixed-use area. You both have residential areas in that vicinity, as well as business. And that's all I have to say at the moment. Thank you.
Mike Scott.
Sylvia. Yes, I had some suggestions that I was going to make for some conditions, and I typed up a one-page document that I'd like to read to you. The, and Laurie, I have a copy right here for you. The land use element of Hopkinton's comprehensive plan in objective value, one states that, quote, "restrict potential polluting land uses from areas over groundwater aquifers and groundwater recharge areas." We know that map 3 of the, in the comprehensive plan, that shows the groundwater and wellhead protection areas, and plat 1447 is in the wellhead protection area and the primary protection zone. In the natural and cultural resource element of the comprehensive plan, and I'll quote, "threats to natural resources are unchecked, commercial activities such as leaking underground storage tanks, unreported spills of hazardous material or petroleum products, and failing septicants that go unmaintained. These materials can enter ground and surface waters, as well as soils, leading to contamination of private and community wells." On March 22nd, 2004, the Hopkinton Council adopted this well, groundwater and wellhead protection ordinance in an attempt to preserve groundwater quality for drinking purposes. In the economic development section of the comprehensive plan, and I'll quote, "Enhancing economic development opportunities in Hopkinton will lead to growth of the town's tax base and labor force and improve the overall quality of life in Hopkinton. In doing so, it's important the town create a balance between new development for economic purposes and protecting the natural environment and historic cultural resources." I want to note that the change from a residential zone to manufacturing will allow more than 100 additional uses over the residential zoning. Given that more than 100 elderly live in the back in elderly housing, and there are residential properties relying on well water, that above this particular lot, Lot 47, I suggest there are few manufacturing uses in the Hopkinton district use table that may be inappropriate for this lot, and I believe is supported by the comprehensive plan. I've got some numbers that I've listed here, and the following uses, I believe, should be prohibited, just to strike that balance between new development for economic purposes and protecting the natural environment, aquifer, and abutting residences, as the Hopkinton comprehensive plan wants us to. Those few items, and of the 199 allowed uses in a manufacturing zone, I'm suggesting that the following 15 be prohibited for this parcel. If you want to follow along, number 24, which is lumber.
Which page in the use table?
Yeah, let's see, it is page, I think it's page 7.
8 and 20.
See what, yeah, it's pa, yeah, it's page 7, right in the middle. Lumber and wood products, except furniture, that's number 24.
That was page 8 of 20 and 9.
Page 8, yeah.
Page 8 of 20.
Yeah.
Right.
That was one of them. The next one is page, oh, page 7, sorry, previous page, and that's number 171 through 174.
I think you missed 28, which is on page 8. That was the next one in line.
Oh, thank you, I did miss 28. I didn't write that one.
What page is that?
On page 8 of 20.
Oh, that one's on 8 also.
Yeah.
28 is, oh, yeah, chemicals and pharmaceuticals, thank you. The other one was 171 through 174, which is structural steel erection.
What page?
Oh, page 7.
Excuse me.
One back.
Could I interrupt for one second, please? Could I have a copy of that? What's your?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get you a copy.
Okay.
Hold on.
Should I give them?
The district use table, yeah, give them the district.
Yeah, I'll look on with Sylvia, okay?
Can I respond to these?
No, no, let us finish, we'll figure.
Let me give you a copy.
Don't worry.
My copy.
All right, what, where are we?
We're on 172.
What page is that?
Page 7.
7.
Right.
172 is ornamental metalwork. 173 is glass and glazing work, and 174 was excavating and foundation work. The next ones are on page 9.
9, 20. 8 of 20, 242.
241.
241, 242, is on 8 of 20.
241 is on 9, I thought.
No.
No, I'm on the wrong page. 241, 241.
Yeah, 241 is on 8.
All right, yep.
Page 8.
241, sawmills and millwork, prefabricated structural wood products and wood containers all go from 241, 242 to 243.
Okay.
All right, the next one.
Page 11.
Thank you.
Bottom of the page.
421. Let's see, 11.
Very bottom of the page.
421 is local and long-distance trucking, and 422, they're with or without storage. The next one is page.
What pages of the trucking?
It's a page 11, at the bottom.
This one is?
The next one is page 17.
17 at the very top.
And that's 634, that's auto services.
634?
Mm-hmm. 634, where is it? Yeah, it's way up at the top.
Yeah, ornamentals and except repair.
Page 19 is 854. Way down to the bottom, gun clubs.
Not big enough for a gun club.
I know.
Indoor.
See, there's outdoor and indoor, so this is the outdoor recreation, and that's glove. And 854 would be out for, because the heading is outdoor, okay? So that would be outdoor, 854.
Here it says indoor, gun club.
Yep, and 875, which is the last page, is private nonprofit recreation, but it doesn't say indoor or outdoors, but the heading above it is indoor. Oh, and then there's another heading that says private nonprofit, but it just says gun clubs.
875.
Oh, wait a minute. 875?
Yeah, it's the last one.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's not allowed in a manufacturing, I'm sorry, 875 isn't even allowed, it's got an "n," so we'll take that one off the list, off my list.
About 3272.
So the last one is 3272, and that's page 20. No, that's not page 20. That's the wrong one.
19 is way.
19?
I had to find that one, it's way in the beginning.
All right.
Oh, you see that?
That was, I'll have to look through all the pages on that one.
It's page 9 of 20, at the bottom.
Oh, I see.
But that's what he's doing.
Well, that's what I want to talk to you about. 372, concrete products including block and brick, okay? I don't know what heading he comes under. There's 168. 168, concrete work.
168.
Okay, thank you. All right, he comes under 168. And concrete products including block and brick, 3272, so that's why I had that there. All right. So those are what I came up with, and I don't know how you feel about those individually, or if there was anything else that you had issues with, but I just wanted to make sure if we add any conditions, because I talked to the solicitor, it's important that whatever, they be able to do what they need to do, it's important that the bank give them financing, and it's important that if we put any of these conditions in here, that we put in these conditions and make it perfectly clear, because the bank's going to see this piece of paper. We want to make sure they know that of the 199 uses, they'll now be able to have access to, only 14 of them are not allowed. So they'll still have those 100 and whatever they are uses that are available to them, so it's not like, oh, if they don't do that, then they can't do anything. They can do all these other things. So that was my thinking when I went through this.
All right, it's a lot of information for us to consider.
Oh, and I'm sorry, the last thing is that 168 does require them to have an aquifer protection permit, by the way.
Okay.
Because that didn't get mentioned, but it's required, definitely, under the district use table. That's all.
All right. Why don't we just, I guess, because there's a lot of items here, why don't we go one by one and just take a consensus?
I think you can, I think it's a good idea to take all of the things individually, as Frank has suggested. I do, however, want to point out that on the second paragraph, the map 3 of the plan delineates groundwater and wellhead protection areas and shows plat 14, Lot 47, is in the wellhead protection area within the primary protection zone. I have a groundwater and wellhead protection map. It is in the secondary zone, not the primary. It does, however, have a wellhead protection area, but it is secondary, not primary. This is the secondary, the yellow. He's right in here.
No.
Right there, where that's Exit 2.
This is the map, right here. Look at this map.
Right, and this is Exit 1, that's Exit 2. This is secondary. This is, this is a wellhead protection area, not a primary. This is wellhead, this is secondary.
Make sure.
This is primary in the green.
Make sure you.
This is, it's just, it's still a wellhead protection area, and surely we'll have more than one well there.
All right.
So I'm not disagreeing that.
No, 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 I'm going down here, this is Lawton Foster Road. We want to make sure we're on the right intersection, okay? Where is the town hall? Right here.
No.
Here's Route 3.
Here's Exit 1.
Here's Exit 1, and this is the town hall.
All right, so where's Exit 2?
Because this is, this is where it goes.
I'm sorry, I have to get it right, one at a time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Let me show you that the wellhead, where they are is located is up here. Look at the map, this is the town hall, down here.
Okay.
You look at this map, and you can see the streets very, very clearly, so you, I want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Just, we just found Exit 2, this is Exit 2 right here, right?
Exit 2 there? Yes, it is, not a primary.
Yep. It's okay.
Well, I take that, what's this road right here? What's this road right here? That's not Conacha Road, is that Conacha?
Conacha is the.
Conacha's right here, right?
Yes.
Okay, so there, yeah, so this is the exit, this is the exit off of 95, right here. So they are.
They're right in there. Yep, yep. It's okay, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Can you see it?
That's fine. They're right in here.
Okay. All right, so as we go through these, we'll take a consensus on whether we want them to be a restriction or not.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so we'll start with number 24.
I have a general question.
Yeah.
Are you, are you sure we're not doing spot zoning here? I know we can sometimes take a space and just say we'd like it to do one thing, but my concern is that with all of these different uses that are being prohibited, that it's really spot zoning. I mean, I would agree with you on some of the issues, but I think some of the issues that are a problem take a special use permit and may indeed be turned down by both planning and zoning. So my concern is this may indeed be spot zoning, because there are 15 uses prohibited from the parcel. It isn't like we've done it.
Can legal define spot zoning for us? Not in this, not in this, but just in general? What is spot zoning?
When you put a zone in a place where it doesn't belong, basically, you just take a piece and carve it out of a larger piece, generally speaking, that constitutes a single zone, like a large area that's all residential, you take a little piece of that and you make it.
Make a store.
Manufacturing, plump down in the middle of it, or something like that.
And in this instance, manufacturing is across the street. It's a manufacturing zone across the street from this parcel.
All right.
So if we changed it to manufacturing, that's still a relative coherent use, and there is manufacturing a little further up the road, too. So.
I think, yeah, I think if my memory serves me correctly, we all were in favor of this applicant.
Mm-hmm.
We just need to define, I guess, if there's going to be any restrictions or not.
Right.
That's kind of the only new thing that we've gotten tonight, so.
Very good. I just mentioned that 24 is an all-inclusive, 24 is an item unto itself. 24 is a, is a italic, as you see, so, see, so 24 represents all of 41, 243, yeah, so we don't have to even think about 24.
Where was 24 again? It was on page?
It's on page 8.
8 in the middle.
Yeah, it's just.
8 in the middle, yeah.
Yeah, so we just, I think we can skip over 24.
Oh.
See?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. I'll get rid of one of them.
All right, gets rid of one of them. Okay, number 28, where's that?
28's chemicals and pharmaceuticals, it's on page 8 of 20.
Yep.
Page what, 8, Barbara?
Page 8 of 20.
It's down at the bottom, chemicals and pharmaceuticals.
All right, where's the manufacturing? That's there from the back.
Oh, one, two. Manufacturing is the third from the last, and this is primary and secondary. The headings are in on these all these pages.
And chemicals and.
Well, it's under a special use permit anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Right.
Which means they'd have to go before zoning and planning?
Yes.
So, I mean, my whole thing with looking at an applicant, and, you know, we've got zoning categories, and then we've got district use tables with those categories. If we start, you know, changing those around to a great degree, I mean, there are checks and balances within the district use table that basically allow the checks and balances to take place, like a special use permit. I'm okay with some of the items that you've identified, but certainly not all.
Yeah, we just need to.
I'm okay with the gun clubs, I belong to one, and certainly 4 acres is not going to constitute an indoor or outdoor club, and I don't think it'll ever happen, so I'm fine with those. I'm fine with the auto sales, except repair.
Can we go?
Yeah, yeah.
Can we go, let's go one by one.
All right, all right. Let's go 28.
So chemicals and pharmaceuticals already has a special use permit?
Right, I'm fine with leaving that, because it has to be fully vetted, anyway. That's my opinion, but.
I don't have a problem there either, because I don't think, under any circumstance, chemicals and pharmaceuticals would take place on a, how many acre lot?
4.2.
4.2 acre lots.
Yeah, five.
Because I just don't think it'll happen.
David, what do you have?
Yeah, I think that we can, we can leave that up to the zoning board, or whatever, if they want to.
They have to get a special use permit.
Right, so I don't, we have to worry about that in a sense, right now, right? Is that correct?
Scott?
Yeah, I would do the special use permit, because it would be vetted, but I want to thank Sylvia for all of her work in locating her concerns. I'd like to say that publicly.
All right, so 28, 24, looks like they'll remain. Let's go with 17.
Well, they're off.
24's going.
24 and 28, they're off.
Right.
Yeah.
And on boards, you got a list of those things that cannot be done, is that correct?
No. No, they're, no, they're off.
They're off your list.
They're off my list.
Off the list, right.
So 171 and 1, is that a duplicate?
And that's 171 through 174, that's page 7.
Yep.
171.
Structural steel, ornamental metal, glass and glazing, and then excavating and foundation work.
I would like to.
Could Sylvia explain why she, why these are listed?
I'm, I'm just concerned about the activities that these particular items have, whether they're noisy, I'm thinking of noise, because there's residential behind them, I'm thinking of noise, and I'm thinking of their business that they want to start, may start, and someday it may not be there, and I'm thinking, so that's my thinking, what could go there? Whether we think there's enough land or not, you never know if somebody's going to buy more land, or whether we think they couldn't possibly do something there, then there's no reason why we couldn't put it on the list, that they can't do it, if we really don't think they could. So my thinking was to go through these items and just, and I had, and I was trying to be extremely conservative, because you could go crazy knocking things out, because we're on well water. Given the assurances that we heard about how they're going to do their business and conduct themselves, we were all impressed. We don't know what will happen while we're, after we're gone, and then it's manufacturing, and they finish, and it goes on to another family, or to someone else. That's, that's all my thinking. Noise, pollution, is basically the two things I thought of, if it was noisy, or might pollute and go in the drain, and might harm something, that's all.
Well, can I?
Go ahead, David.
You know, I'm looking at this right here, and I just happened to glance down to 181, it says junkyards and scrap wholesaling. That's something I don't want to see. I'd rather, I don't want to see junkyards.
It's not allowed in the primary, that's why I didn't add it. So you'd also have to look over and see, is there an "n"? So there's an "n" in the primary, so junkyards are not allowed.
What column is a primary?
Ah, second.
Second column?
That's the second one from the end.
Oh, okay.
It's got an "n." You see wrecking and demolition work, oh, noisy, but it's not allowed.
Okay.
So that's, so that's something, too, to think of.
You know, Frank, I know you, Barbara wants to say something.
I understand what Sylvia's doing, too. Most of this is special use permit, but she is right, that you do not know what will happen in the future. One of the things that I actually liked about Mr. Hawkins' business is that the cement work is art, is an artisan's work, which I think is wonderful, and I know that one of the things we are going to make sure is that your buildings are enclosed, are, so there is no dust, there is no noise, they're going to be insulated, everything on the outside of the building will be enclosed. So I don't have a problem, because I actually would like to see your son, Justin's, work expanded into other artisans, like ornamental metalwork, or like glass and glazing. I have seen stunning walls of glass and glazing that is done as an artisan, and I think that would be wonderful to make that part of the exit expand into the manufacturing that artisans do. His is, in particular, cement, but indeed, the glass and glazing, I would be very happy to have. Ornamental metalwork, they just do stunning work when it's ornamental, and if it's within the building, I would agree, in the building, enclosed and insulated, I have no problem. I do understand your issues with structural steel and excavating and foundation work. I think that those two are certainly two things I would like not to see there, but the other two are actually work of artists. That's all.
Scott, did you have?
Yeah, I have a question for you, since you're a former member of the planning board. To what extent do you think should enter in our decision potential noise from any of these categories we're talking about, as far as restricting that activity at that site?
Well, from my brief stint on the planning board, I think that that question always gets asked, whether any applicant goes to for a special use permit. It's one of the main things, aside from cover of, from the, from the public, as far as any signage or any buildings, everybody wants it covered, so I think it's, it's a process that really does get fully vetted, especially when it has to do with that, with the noises aspect, so, you know, it is a special use permit on all four of these. I am comfortable with that, because I know how detailed the planning and zoning boards are, so, like I said, there's a few of them that I'm not comfortable with, based on some of the public comment at the last, initial hearing, I should say, about noise and things of that nature, so I'm okay with a couple of them. And again, it stems back to, if we restrict any of these things, it should, it should hopefully not affect any financing options that they may have, too. And if it does, I guess you just let us know, but, like I said, I'm comfortable with it being a special use permit, and they have to get that, so I think that's our protection, get that, so I think that's our protection, but that's, you know, that's my thoughts.
But it's also, the council has to recognize the reality that's a mixed-use area with both business and residential, so we have an obligation to that neighborhood as well as an obligation to, Mr. Hawkins is a landowner, that we try to balance both interests as well as the town as a whole, and I can understand some of these things being prohibited, but then I also have in the back of my mind if the special use permit and then the zoning board and the planning board are more equipped than the town council to evaluate those things. I'm just concerned about probably excessive noise issues and things of that nature. I mean, because neighbors do complain, we have another situation in town going on where the neighbors are concerned about something in the Ashway area, so I'm just interested in more input, but this isn't a winning issue, I think. No matter what we do, I'm sure we're going to tick some people off, so that happens.
Okay, so Barbara made a suggestion.
I'd like to see 172 and 173 stay. I would like, I would like to rethink 171, 174.
When you say stay, you mean as exclusions?
No, as allowed. I would like 172 and 173 allowed.
Okay.
I would like 171 and 174 for us to come back to it perhaps. I do agree with Frank, but it does have a special use permit, and I think that will take care of it. However, the noise issue that Mr. Hurst brought up should be able to be taken care of because it's in an enclosed building with heavy insulation, specifically to avoid that because certainly concrete cutting is noisy too.
There is a, probably a physical boundary.
Yes. Yeah, hold on, Mr. Hawkins, you can't, we've got to finish first.
Okay.
I'm with Barbara. I like to see 171 and 174 stay. I don't see any problem with 172 and 173. I think they can be forgotten.
Okay.
My concern is looking at 174 excavation and foundation work, we're talking about activities that are going to be on that site, like if they put an addition on there, the excavation and foundation work, but you're talking about that as a business, correct?
Correct.
I mean, and that small area, I mean, why would you do excavating and foundation work unless you're adding to a building?
We were saying not to use, not to have that used. 171, 174 would be, as Sylvia also suggests, not to be a use.
Let's talk about them in terms of being exclusions or not exclusions. Maybe that would help everybody getting in track. So, right now we've got not to be exclusions, 24, 28, 172, and 173, and to be exclusions 171 and 174.
Correct.
Right.
Well, not yet.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're in the process.
So far.
But, you know, Scott, you've got a good point. I mean, I worked in structural steel when I was in college, you know, it's putting up metal buildings. I mean, I don't know if you're going to be able to, I mean, they usually have an office and then they go build their building, so I can't see a structural steel company, that's all they do at the site. I just, I would love to have it be more elaborate. But again, it's a special use permit and I'm probably okay with those two.
We can come back to them too. Because that's what I'd like, is if we can make a list of exclusion and non-exclusion and come back to them because we do need to hear from the public as well.
Hearing's closed.
No, the hearing's closed.
Hearing's closed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hawkins, perhaps?
I guess, all right, let's go back to, I'm okay on, at least initially on those two.
All right, the next one is page nine, if we believe, 241.
Page eight.
Page nine. No, page eight. 241, 241.
Right here. Sawmills and planning mills?
Yeah, page eight.
241, two and three.
I'm, I would agree with Sylvia on 241 because I don't think under any circumstance would you get a sawmill or a planning mill there. However, there is no special use, that's just permitted, so that would be a good one not to have. However, 242 and 243, again, I can see artists doing all of that. Millwork, prefabs, beautiful structural wood, wooden containers. I think they could be a wonderful set of artisans.
Dave, any thoughts?
If you stop putting wooden containers together on site, I'm just, you know, worried about nail guns going off. I don't know, you know, it could be artisans and it could be just simply building crates with nail guns, and I don't want to hear nail guns going off all day.
Well, they assume it'll be in a building.
So, I'd like to, I'd like to have those as exclusions.
Which one?
243, 242, and 241. I can't imagine a sawmill going in there, but I think it should be, we should include that, yeah. So, I'd like to see all three go, be exclusions.
Scott?
I'd probably go along with that, but I keep on thinking if everything has to be done inside and...
It's permitted and there's no special use permit, so we don't know where it's going to be.
I would, then I would support that because it's not a special use permit, but it would seem that if it's in a building and the noise is controlled, then if you could virtually do anything in there, I mean...
Unless it goes outside.
Yeah.
But part of our motion, I believe, has to do with the buildings being insulated and, you know, OSHA approved for dust and insulation and noise. I think that's part of the motion to approve because we discussed that last time.
We're approving his business because it's going to be inside, but if he sells his business, moves someplace else, and all of a sudden we get a wooden container company coming in, they say, hey, the whole piece of property here is zoned manufacturing, I'm going to start building crates outside the building with an area.
Yeah, but we can restrict that, I think.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I think too. I think it's part of the restriction in the motion is that even if he sells it to someone, that is a restriction.
All manufacturing has to be done inside?
That everything has to be done inside the building, which is insulated and controlled.
All future uses?
Yeah, I think it's for all of it because it's for, not just for Hawkins. It's when he sells it, these things go with it.
Well, let's make sure of that when we get to it.
I agree. And then everything outside, we also want it enclosed and not have outdoor storage.
All right, so David, again, you want all three excluded?
Please, that's how I feel.
Okay. Barbara?
Only 241.
Yeah, and I feel the same way on the sawmill. I don't want a sawmill, but I'm okay with the millwork and the wooden containers. Scott?
I would be inclined to do that, but since it's permitted and I would prefer to have a special use permit which is not there, I will support the assignment just expressed by Council husband.
Sylvia?
Yeah, oh, well, I want all three off.
Okay.
So, we've got a consensus that 241, 242, and 243 are going to be exclusions, correct?
Please.
Okay. Next?
Next is page 11. It's 421. Down the bottom.
Yeah.
Local and long-distance trucking. 421 is without storage and the other one is the same thing but with storage.
I, I know the public had expressed concern about noise and traffic, so I am absolutely fine not having these be a part of this use.
I agree.
421, 422.
I agree.
421, 422.
A mixed-use village, I think it's probably a no-brainer or very obvious.
Okay. David? Sure. 634, where's that?
17. Oh, way at the top. I don't know how you have automobile services except repair. Not sure. I guess...
Car sales.
Car or rentals, maybe, or maybe that's somewhere else. But, anyway.
It's a special use permit because it's really too small to do any of that. I mean, the special use permit is there. We have Edward's Garage just nearby, which is repair.
Yeah, but do we want another Edward's Garage there?
But it's under a special use permit, so I mean, I think that's something that you trust the zoning board to say you're not going to do car rentals out of this location. This is one where I would trust the zoning and the planning board to say, you just can't do this.
Scott?
I look at this in my concept, other than repair, the only thing you really would have is either rentals or selling automobiles, and the way I'm looking at this property now with proposed, it's not really a sales-type thing. As we would typically know it, I mean, it's generally going to be selling countertops and those type of things, but it's not going to be like something that people would go to rent a car or buy a car. I just don't see it.
Not for this particular business, Scott, but in the future if they sell the business, that's what you've got to look at.
I prefer it to...
It does have a special use permit designation, so...
Yeah, I would like to probably eliminate that because I don't see that, that's not part of my vision for that site.
Okay.
I think a special use permit covers us on that one.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fully confident that the zoning and planning will make sure that that doesn't go in there. If it does, it's going to minimize traffic and issues. That's why I'm leaving it.
So, 634 is staying? It's not going to be excluded?
Correct.
That's right.
I'm fine with it.
854.
And the last one, gun clubs, page 19.
It's too small a parcel for me for a gun club, so...
It's also a special use.
You could indoor gun club?
You could build one, but it's expensive.
Yeah. That's also a special use permit.
You know, I think the fact that it is so close to residences and a gun club is a lot more noise than even some of the construction. I would agree with Sylvia, I think, on that. 854, indoor private gun clubs. I have no idea. You probably know more, Frank, about how much space...
If it's noisy, you won't hear it, but I just don't, it's so expensive to build something like that.
And they have to have parking?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. It's in the...
You'd find leaving it as an exclusion.
Right.
Right. I'm pretty sure the neighbors wouldn't like to have a gun club right there. Yeah, I would agree with that.
We have enough, we have one that's got plenty on the end and they can join that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Scott, let's say you want that?
It's for the obvious, if you want a gun club, there's no reason for it to be in there.
All right.
So, does that apply to 875 as well, which is the private, non-private?
Yeah, that's a mistake. 875, I don't think there was, 875 is...
It's the last one.
Is not permitted.
It's not permitted.
It's not permitted, so I shouldn't have that on the list. It's not permitted anyway. But I'm mistaken. The last one is 3272, concrete products including block and brick, which I don't want to make a mistake here, but I'm not sure exactly what that means anyway. But I knew that they could do what they wanted to do under 168 or 165, and Pat says it's 168. So, I wasn't sure whether we wanted to leave or not. Concrete blocks including block and brick.
It's their business, it's Conca, I'm not going to change that.
Well, that's why I'm asking anybody.
That's too close, for me anyways, too close.
It is close, and I think that's a good point.
Okay.
Barbara, you guys okay with 3272? It's got concrete in the wording. I'm not going to fix it.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. So, we're taking that out?
Right.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to summarize this, guys, okay?
Please.
Yep.
The only exclusions are the 171.
Which is?
Structural steel.
Structural steel erection. 174, which is excavating and wrecking. 241, which is sawmills. 242, millwork. And 243, which is wood containers. 421, local and long-distance trucking with and without storage, also 422. And then 854, which is indoor gun clubs. Right, did I get everything?
You got everything?
Okay, good.
So, that ended up being one, two, three, four, five, six, about eight.
Eight, excellent. All right, Barbara, let's make an appropriate schedule. Let's try to get that done.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I move that we accept the ordinance amendment proposed by Albert I. Hawkins Jr. amending Chapter 134 of the Town of Hopkinton zoning ordinance and the future land use map of the Town of Hopkinton Rhode Island Comprehensive Community Plan to change from residential special to manufacturing. That certain parcel of land identified as Assessor's Platte 14, Lot 47, otherwise known as 813 Main Street, which land is more specifically identified in the text of the amendment itself, which I ask be published in full in the minutes at this point. This amendment will permit the operation of manufacturing uses as identified by the zoning ordinance on the subject parcel rather than the currently zoned residential special use, except for numbers 171, 174, 241, 242, 243, 421, and 422, and 854 from the use, district use table. The council finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, bears a reasonable relationship to the public health, safety, and welfare, and is in the best interest of the community based on the following. One, the planning board has recommended approval of the request to change and determine that the proposed proposal promotes manufacturing business in town without adverse impact to the surrounding area. Two, the planning board has further indicated that this particular area is almost inappropriate for residential use and is not really feasible for any residential use at this point, and that the proposed use is more in keeping with the surrounding uses than its current residential use. Three, the planning board has further indicated that the proposed change in use would not cause any negative environmental impact on the abutting properties. Four, while two area neighbors raised concerns about the possible impact on their neighborhood, no evidence was offered in direct objection to the application. Five, Albert I. Hawkins Jr. and his son, Justin Hawkins, testified that the proposed use they intend to make of the property is to be, is to immediately build one 50-foot by 100-foot building to house Justin Hawkins' concrete product manufacturing business. At some point in the future, a second 50-foot by 100-foot building could be sought for the site to house Albert Hawkins' well drilling business or some other business. The site is approximate to the highway and good for trucking as well as employee access. There will be no large machinery and any noise should be kept entirely within the building. Justin Hawkins testified about the high-end concrete products his company, Livingstone Concrete Studios, which currently employs three people, creates countertops, fireplaces, and other applications. This business falls under the Use 168 concrete work in the District Use Table. He indicated that the bulk of the work of his artisans involves hand tools and woodworking to put together the forms or molds for the products. He follows MSDS guidelines for any hazardous chemicals used as well as OSHA requirements. Generally, however, given the small scale of his operation, waste is not a problem. Further, everything needed for the business will be stored inside and there will be no outside storage other than trucks, the largest of which is a 14-foot box truck. His hours of operation would be generally 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM with some later hours on occasion. The applicant plans to place the building on the site so that it is screened from the road and closer to Route 3 to minimize any impact on residential neighbors. Currently, the existing residence on the site has been gutted and is boarded up. It must be torn down. The previous owner of the property used the property for storage of his junk business. The proposed change, I'm sorry, number six. The proposed change is consistent with the authority reserved to the council under the comprehensive plan to identify those areas in town where manufacturing use such as the use proposed is appropriate, rather than rezone large areas for manufacturing and lose control over the types of manufacturing uses that best serve the citizens of the town while preserving the character of the town and protecting the environment. The proposed zone change accomplishes all of these goals. It also supports the goal of economic development in an area ideally suited to this use. Number seven, I move additionally that our granting of the proposed zone change be conditioned on the following. A, that to the greatest extent possible, all traffic to and from any proposed building or business on the site, including any delivery and shipping traffic, utilize only Exit 2 from Route 95 to Route 3 for access to and from the facility. B, that all exterior lighting at the proposed facility be designed so as to minimize to the greatest extent possible the light pollution generated by the facility and be in compliance with our lighting ordinance. C, that any building on the premises be located away from any residential neighbors and toward Route 3 to the greatest extent possible. D, that any building on the premises be properly screened from view, from view of the road and any residential neighbors by trees and other vegetation. E, that any building on the premises be situated such that as many of the currently existing trees on the site be left undisturbed. F, that any and all outside storage of material or anything else other than trucks be fully enclosed. G, that appropriate insulation and dust control products be used in the construction of any building such that any noise and dust generated by the business remain inside the premises to the greatest extent possible. H, that any signage utilized be in full conformance with our sign ordinance.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Go.
I have one question, Charlie.
I'm the recorder.
Can I, one question. When you, 241 and 243, that you both had, they have restrictions on, 242 is basically, if you were building a cabinet or a kitchen cabinet, is the way I look at it. Is that, is that how you look at that, or is that, how do you, how do you define that?
I think we were looking at it in terms of crates, not cabinets.
Okay, as long as it's crates, not cabinets, you know, I mean, the next one does say crates. 243 says crates. 242 is basically saying any kitchen cabinet that I built or anything else that I built, which is basically in line with what we are doing or what we're trying to do, you know, I mean, not that we would have someone that we're going to build kitchen cabinets, but we have kitchen cabinets that we adversely put countertops on, you know, I mean, and that's why I was wondering, or someone might come in as an artisan who builds kitchen cabinets. That is not, I don't think that's...
Your business is concrete products, so if it comes up, just let us know.
Okay, all right.
If it comes up, just let us know.
In that respect, okay.
Okay. Yes, Justin?
I brought this up to my father's attention, just because currently I'm working on an office down in Narragansett, and we are, we're doing cabinetry work for them. You know, we do a little bit more than just concrete work. We do, we do some, you know, some decorative wood products as well. We do some steel work as well, to a minimal extent. Our main business is the concrete work. And I brought it up because that was when, when I think of mill work, I think of cabinets, and that's, that's where I was, I didn't want to be-
Well, let me point out that number five-seven-one, I don't know if you've looked at the other uses, but we've got furniture, home furnishings, equipment stores, I mean, there are other sections where you could build, I believe, for instance, that one, where you could build your cabinets. And it's allowed.
Okay, so cabinetry work, okay.
If you have any problems, just let us come back to us.
That's right, let us know.
You guys are in good shape.
I'd like to have, I'd like to have my paperback, too. I'm sure the town clerk, the deputy town clerk can make your copy.
My carding gift, I guess, Scott?
Please remember, it's five-seven-one. That is allowed, five-seven-one.
I think, I think as long as, as long as your primary source of income are the countertops and the-
David, we've already made the motion. Let's not get into it.
You're good to go.
Good luck to you. Thank you very much for your patience. I appreciate it. Okay. Next, consent agenda. Approved town council meeting minutes of October sixth, twenty-fourteen. Approved petition of National Grid and Verizon for a joint poll location on Tomahawk Road. Approved refunds submitted by the tax collector. Approved abatement submitted by the tax assessor, except the following report, town clerk. I just need to pull the minutes for ten-six.
On October sixth?
Yeah, yeah, page nine. I just want, maybe Bill can help me out with that.
Is that the money thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Page nine on ten-six minutes at the top. It says hydrants had a cost of four-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred-and-fifty, I think it's a hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons, not a hundred-and-fifty gallons, right? For the flushing, a hundred-and-fifty thousand, right. So that's a typo, top of page nine. And then also, towards the middle of the page, it says flushing the lines to determine the usage of a hundred-and-fifty gallons, that should be a hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons, and that's it.
And I'd like to vote on this separately, because I was absent.
I make a motion to approve the town council meeting minutes of October sixth with its, the alterations made.
Second. Okay, motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain.
And I'd like to approve petition of National Grid and Verizon for a joint poll location on Tomahawk Road. Approved refund submitted by the tax collector. Approved abatement submitted by the tax assessor, except the following report, town clerk.
Okay, motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, first, public forums. Anyone out there wishing to be heard? Town manager report, Bill McGarry.
Thank you. During the month of October, Lynn Hall, my administrative assistant, coordinated the advertising and recruitment for the positions of deputy finance clerk and police officer. The town sent out letters of receipt to all applicants who applied for all positions. And the deadline date for the receipt of applications for the clerks position was October seventeenth, last Friday, and October tenth for the police officers position. All the applications have been received, with the deadlines passed. We received forty-six applications for the vacant police officer slot and twenty-five applications for the soon-to-be vacant fiscal clerk. October ninth, I responded to the Valley Country Club in Warwick and swore in the newly-elected offices of the Rhode Island Tax Assessors Association. The Hopkinton's tax assessor, Christine Bruschel, was sworn in as president of the organization and will serve a one-year term. There were approximately fifty persons in attendance, and it was very well-attended at their monthly meeting. Lastly, October fourteenth, I met with Jim Lamfair and Tim Teft in the planning office, and we discussed the final details of the road reconstruction funding application that was forwarded to Rhode Island DOT. It's going to go through the Rhode Island Clean Water Agency, and that was submitted on October fifteenth. And the funding for this project was for the reconstruction of Palmer Circle. It's still a work in progress, we've got a lot of work to do, but Jim was able to get that application in on time, and we'll just wait to hear in a couple of months from Rhode Island Clean Water as to whether or not we're able to qualify for any of their loans.
Okay, any questions for Bill?
No.
All right, thank you, Bill. Under old business, Charahoe, boy, isn't that a good question? Anyway, we all attended a joint session, I guess, with the other town councils, the school committee, and the administration, and we wanted, I guess, to discuss, I guess, the changing of the start time of the Charahoe budget hearing from seven-thirty to seven. Sylvia, you want to preface this?
Yeah, I have to say that, how many times did I say, and we all talked about not voting, that we wanted to mull it over and bring it back? We kind of got pushed into things, but that's our, it's my fault. I take responsibility for my own actions that night. I wish that I had just kept saying to them, you know, we don't have time to go over things, and we have time at a council meeting, so here we are. So, the two items, changing the start time, I think that's not an issue. I think that we had agreed that it made sense, and I think the other councils agreed that it made sense to change it to seven, since generally that's when it's been starting. Nobody realized you should start at seven-thirty. The issue is, however, if we're going to change the time, and the Richmond motion, when they made their motion, it just didn't, they just said, "Go ahead and change the time," but they didn't say the other part. And the other part was, if this was the only change to the Charahoe Act, we don't, we had said that we didn't want to move forward with this change if this was the only one, because there would be an expense at the polls just to change the time. So if there was another change to the act in the future, whether it's tomorrow, or next year, or five years from now, this should hopefully be added, that we can agree. And I think that we can communicate with the other towns if you, if you're okay with this, that that's our position, that we agree that it could go to seven o'clock, provided there's other items that need, that are going to open up the Charahoe Act, because we don't want to do it for just this one simple thing, that's all. So if everybody's okay with that-
Can I just ask, because I was in there?
Yeah.
What was the thinking behind the idea of moving it from seven-thirty to seven?
Oh, because the Charahoe Act says that you're supposed to start at seven-thirty, and every year they've been starting at seven. And it wasn't until it was in the newspaper that Richmond actually noticed it, that we've been starting at seven, and it really says seven-thirty. So the thinking is, well, if we're going to change the Charahoe Act in any way, why don't we just change that to seven?
Sure.
If we're going to change the Charahoe Act in some other section, that's all. So that was the thinking on our part.
Yes, Barbara?
I believe at that discussion, however, we voted, as a council, to not let that be brought up. I think we should just leave that alone.
That's an idea, too.
I mean, just-
And if something comes up, we can add to it. That's a good idea, too.
We already said it was not something we were going to vote on, because specifically we did not want it to be the only thing.
The only item, yeah.
So I think we've already done our due diligence.
Okay. The next item, oh, I'm sorry-
Let me solicit, Scott.
Well, a couple of things. Number one, number one, the first question is, what other parts of the Charahoe Act do you haven't been following? Maybe that's the only one, and it might be considered minor, but that's a good question. I don't have an answer to that. Number two, I can understand not doing that unless you did it at the next general election in 2016, you could do it then. Then you wouldn't have to worry about all the poll work, because if you wanted to vote on a change then, and wait two years. But I, I think we probably should take a stand, because what happens if people say, "Well, Hopkinton remained silent," and the other two towns took a stand one way or the other? So I think we should at least have a motion, not to, not to bring it up, but some's going to say, "Well, Hopkinton didn't take a stand. They were just silent on the issue." So for the sake of having a clear sentiment expressed, if you want to have a motion, which I'm willing to make, Mr. President, I'll throw it out there and see what happens.
What if, Scott, instead of a motion, when we communicate with the other towns, we communicate, but we don't make a motion, we communicate our feelings?
In a form of a resolution, I suppose?
Well, no, just in a letter, in a letter form, just let them know that this is something that we could bring up at a later date when the Charahoe Act is, if it's ever opened.
We've agreed, Jose, to use that term.
Yes.
How about agreeing that it could be voted on in the 2016 election?
Because, because we're not-
We're not the council then.
We're not even, not even the council then. We don't know who the council will be. This is sort of a moot point. I doubt someone's going to bring it up. I don't think it's going to go to the government or to the legislature. We were all agreed, actually, at the meeting, we all agreed seven o'clock is fine. We just specifically voted it down so it would not come up and go to the legislature and waste our time as a single issue. I think we did just fine.
Okay.
Then, should I make a motion that the council or the clerk inform the other towns what the sentiment is on that issue?
Why don't we wait until we finish tonight? Because we're going to, no doubt, communicate with the other towns, because they want to know what's, what we're going to do. So we've got to communicate in some way, and we can communicate in a letter. We don't need to bother with most-
Yeah, as far as, I mean, the time is really a very small, minor change. I think we always start at seven, and it's in seven-thirty. I can't see an issue with not, with changing it. I think it's, should be changed formally, but finally sending out a letter and soliciting the other towns, and if this is the only item, then we're not going to do it. If it's part of something else larger, then fine. Because I do agree, we've got to be consistent in our message, like Barbara said, you know, we voted not to do anything, so-
But just as a point of information, I'll stand corrected on this, because Sylvia's been around quite a long time, like I. I know David, editor of the Charahoe Times, that in the past, they've gone to the legislature to actually change dates of the annual Charahoe meeting without even a vote of the people, because that's happened in the past, too, as I recall. I just want to put that out.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're okay with that, just having the clerk, I guess, let them know, the rest of the councils know how our feelings are on that particular issue. Number two, discussed removing the quorum from the Charahoe budget hearing. We all voted on that, whoever was there. David wasn't. Again, at the risk of being consistent, you know, I decided to, to vote for not having the quorum, and I'm going to stick with that, because that's what I made my decision on. I didn't go into that meeting thinking I was going to make any decisions on anything, but I'm going to be consistent and stick by my word and stay with it. I made my bed, and I'll stay with it, I'll sleep in it, so that's my thoughts on it.
The issue on that is, is there a mechanical problem if that was removed, like if there was conflicting warrants or anything of that nature? Or is that not a problem at an annual meeting of the school district? In other words, I could see probably shrinking the quorum, like twenty or whatever, I'm just throwing that out, but isn't there a problem mechanically? I'm waiting for somebody to answer that, that if there's a conflicting, like, petition or something about the amount or anything?
Can I read those two pages? I mean, the paragraph?
Okay.
There's a couple of sentences in here, in the Charahoe Act, it happens to be on page six. And if, at, at the district meeting, the hearing that we're talking about, where we have a quorum, where twenty-five people from each town need to be there, and they are voters, and the Board of Canvases has to be there from each town to make sure that they're voters, and they get to, and the quorum means that if you don't have twenty-five from each town, you better call somebody to get them there. So that did happen once, one year, where the people did make calls, and we got the twenty-five people there, and we had our meeting. But on page six, what didn't come up that night, because we were rushed and there wasn't time, a lot of reasons, but the bottom line is, if the quorum disappears, there are times when, at that meeting, there is voting. So how are we going to know whether, and you don't, and there is, for, for instance, there is always voting, for instance, the minutes, is a simple thing, whether or not to read the minutes. That's just a minor little thing. But there is also the issue of, if a petition is signed by two-hundred qualified voters for the, at the district, and they're qualified to vote, let me read this paragraph here. "All voters qualified in their respective towns to vote at the financial town meeting next proceeding, the annual or special district meeting shall be eligible to attend and vote at said annual or special regional school district meeting." So if you vote in your own town financial meeting, you're eligible to vote at the district meeting. But when would you vote? You would vote if there was any petitions, any items that came before the school committee in addition, and separate from their budget, like we have warrant items. So that's one instance where there is voting. The other instance on the, on page-
But this, let me just back up.
Yep.
This specifically states the budget, not the warrant item voting, or-
No, I'm talking about at district meetings.
Oh, okay.
When you go to the district meeting, there is voting that occurs. And there may be more significant voting that is occurred, which has a financial impact on all the taxpayers, if they have additional items. And people come in with a petition and a warrant, not a warrant item, but come in with a petition signed by two-hundred voters. So there are instances where there is additional voting. And as was pointed out to me, when you take away one simple thing, make sure you look at the whole document to see where else-
What else may be?
That one little thing that you changed affect other parts of the act. And that was one thing to think of. The other one was on page eight, for implications, and that is, "The regional school district meeting, on recommendation of the regional school committee for the said district, by majority vote of the voters present and qualified to vote, may direct a school committee to dispose of real or personal property having a value of $20,000 or more." Now, that's something that does come up more often, from time to time, at the district meeting. So how are we going to be doing voting? It's not an easy matter. Now, I, now I made a decision that night to move forward with this, thinking that it's a simple matter. It's not a simple matter. I made a mistake that night. I'm going to change, and I do not want to see the Charahoe Act changed by removing the quorum, knowing that there is voting that occurs at that district meeting. The people that are vested in the school need to be there, and they need, and we need to know that they're residents, and they're voting residents, and they have a right to be there, and they have a right to vote. And unfortunately, the people that do that are the Board of Canvases, so I don't know how to get around it.
Okay, yep. All right, Barbara?
I was the only person at the meeting that said, "Do not remove the quorum." I was the only one, because, and you have to realize, in fairness, we had three minutes to talk, for all five people had three minutes together, all five talking three minutes. So there was no time to discuss, to get anything in depth. It was done very, in a very shallow manner. I personally like the quorum. I think if you have something as important as a budget meeting, you should have twenty-five people from each town. For heaven's sakes, there are eight thousand people in the town, you can find twenty-five. But I think anytime you have Charahoe talking to the public, I would very much like to have a quorum of, the twenty-five people is not unreasonable to have at a meeting. And I think the more they communicate with people, the more people might actually attend. But I really can't say much about this one in specific, because I already said to keep it.
Right. And David, you weren't out there, so-
We're there.
So I can't go in.
Well, you can decide. You can decide tonight.
Oh, I can tell you what I think. I think it's ridiculous that we get rid of a twenty-five quorum. If it's two-hundred-and-fifty people, that's one thing, but twenty-five people, if a town can't produce twenty-five voters to support a budget that's in the, in the fifty-two-million-dollar range, then there's something really wrong. So I have no problem with keeping, keeping the twenty-five quorum. I don't, I don't understand, really understand getting rid of it, you know, I just, I've never been to a meeting, I've been to a lot, a lot of meetings. I go back to the meetings back, back in the seventies, and I've never seen a problem with a quorum. Now, maybe there was at one, at one meeting, but I never, I've never seen a problem.
Bear in mind, we did decide that night. You know, motions to reconsider, I think typically, according to Robert's rules, have to be made either that night or maybe in the next meeting. But I am, you know, willing to consider some of the additional information to be put forth to the solicitor, and we'll figure it out and see if we all like the language as they're put down. I think that's a better way to go about it than just, we can't, Lisa, I'm not going to reverse course. We made a decision, we can't make a motion to reconsider, because it's already passed the time.
But someone can vote. That's right, the reconsider thing was the wrong way to go. Any one of us who voted for it to do this can then make a motion tonight not to do it.
I make a motion, Mr. President.
Wait, wait, wait.
Hold on.
What?
That's a basically reconsideration.
Excuse me, I'm not to do it, I mean, I'm sorry. We can vote, we voted not to have a quorum to remove it from the Charahoe Act, so tonight, anyone who, who agreed that we should get rid of it, the, who can make a motion tonight to get rid of it?
You can't make a motion to reconsider, you're over time.
We're not doing the reconsidering.
Oh, wait, but that's what you're talking about.
No, no, I'm not.
That's why I said stop.
Oh, no, no, Frank wrote it up, there's no reconsidering, it can't be done, but it doesn't mean you can't vote, just strictly voting, nothing, no motion, just go. Nothing, no motion, just, in other words, if I made a motion, or Scott made a motion, that we want the quorum for the Charahoe budget hearing to remain.
Can't we just do it as a consensus and send that note to the other councils and the school board as well as the start time? Just make this a consensus and send a letter?
Sure, we can do that, too.
Because we've already voted, we, I, I think Frank is right. I mean, I lost, but, you know, we already voted. I don't see how we can go back on that, but certainly you're right that we can do a consensus.
But we have voted, so just so you know, we have done it in the past where we've changed our votes.
I know, but that doesn't mean it was proper.
Oh, okay, all right.
But I'm just going to say, please also keep in mind that this is not the end of the discussion, but at some point, you're going to get presented to you a written draft of proposed language. You are going to have an opportunity at that point to say, we don't like the language, so no. So this isn't the be all and end all. You are going to have another.
So to your point, you can inform all your concerns with that process.
So we can send, that's fine with me. I, I, that's all right. If you want to just put it in a letter that this consensus is and not to do it, that's fine.
I think we got a consensus on both of them, the normal, I mean, appropriate way to address this.
Okay.
I mean, it's pretty hard to refute the.
Prior vote?
You know, I mean, the requirements for certain thing that you can't do if you don't have a quorum, so.
And you certainly don't want to refute the prior vote. I mean, it's done.
No, no, we have to, we can't be, be inconsistent in that message.
But it's better to catch something for.
Some information came to light, we'll include that in the, in the correspondence for the towns.
Okay, correspondence, great.
It'd be pretty tough for the other towns, or even the school committee, too. And that was the school committee's issue that it'd be pretty hard to refute, not keeping the quorum logically.
Yeah, and the Charleston's reconsidering it also.
Well, and the language for this is evolving. You know, as we speak, we have answers that I brought to light. The concept is evolving. You know, originally it was this, we're going to get rid of the quorum. Now I understand that strictly, we're going to get rid of the quorum for budget-related purposes. You know, by the time it comes to you in some language form, you may not object at all to what it says. You don't know until you see the language.
Just make sure that all the comments, including what Barbara said tonight, goes in that letter.
Yeah, and I have a real problem with bringing a meeting up only for the budget when they really don't bring up anything to the public except for the budget. I mean, no one goes to the school committee meetings, no one really goes to the budget meetings. So the only time the public gets a chance to look at the budget and anything else they would want to bring up, including that petition with 200 votes, would be that particular meeting. So I think a quorum is good. Everybody gets to talk or bring something up, especially that piece you read, Sylvia, on 200.
Yeah, it even said that the people that speak at the meeting are voters.
Oh, they should be.
And how are you going to know who the voters are? It even says that in the Charahoe Act. Then you even bring that up as another implication. You have to look at the whole document and find out that different parts are affected by one little change.
Right, and the thing is, they need to be voters because we're voting on money.
Yeah.
We're voting financing.
Yeah.
We're not voting on, on moral issues or ethical issues. Voting on our taxes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, great. So we'll set it, guys, thank you. Next, under new businesses, to discuss and consider awarding a bid for the Police Department Dispatch Center improvements to Communications Plus LLC of 84 Salem Turnpike Norwich, Connecticut in the amount of $151,151.20, the low bid. Bill, you want to chime in?
Sure. Thanks.
The town of Hopkinton recently solicited bids for radio dispatch and other improvements to the Police Department Dispatch Center. We went out to bid, we advertised to the general public, we received two bids, and they were open on October 3rd. Communications Plus LLC of 84 Salem Turnpike Norwich, Connecticut submitted the low bid of $151,151.20. The other bidder was Cyber Communications, Inc., Colorado Avenue, Warwick, and they submitted a bid of $195,537. And after a thorough review, Police Chief Dave Palmer and I recommend that the council award the project to the, to Communications Plus, the low bidder. And the funding for this project was obtained through an outside source.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Thank you. Please.
I move that the Hopkinton Town Council award the bid for the Police Department Dispatch Center improvements to Communications, to Communications Plus LLC in the amount of
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any other council discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Palmer for looking so thoroughly into the Charleston using Communication Plus and the, the use, the service, the support. And I was really glad to read that and appreciated it because there was a very large difference. 40,000 is a big difference between the two quotes. I just want to thank you for that.
Very well, they all turned a bid for Charleston, very happy with their show.
It seemed like the bulk of the, the cost was, on the other higher bid was labor, and I hope they're not just dropping off the system and letting us install it. It just seemed like there was $40,000 in labor costs.
And no furniture. And no furniture. There was no furniture.
Anyway. Motion made in second. Any other further discussion?
No, I mean, the labor costs really, it was around 30,000 difference for the labor cost. The only thing, it seems, that Cyber Communications was lower on was the phone system and everything else, Communications Plus. As I understand, and I stand correctly, after reading this, Cyber Communication, we've had them for like, what, five years?